All right, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Tiverton Town Council Monday, March 24th, 2025 at 7:00. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
My apologies. Now, if we could just pause for a moment of silence in remembrance of James Goncalo, former town administrator for the town of Tiverton. Thank you. Now, Madam Clerk.
Take the roll call, Counselor Comito.
Present.
Counselor Hayden.
Present.
Counselor Janik.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos. Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Paul.
Present.
And Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos will be a moment or two late. Okay, now, everybody will bear with me. I'd like to read this proclamation. So whereas on this day Victor Ferland has reached the remarkable milestone of being 100 years old, and whereas Victor Ferland has been a cherished member of the Tiverton community contributing significantly to the fabric of our town, and whereas Victor Ferland has demonstrated an unwavering dedication to his family, being one of 15 siblings and a lifelong tradesman, and being one of many who built the Braga Bridge in Fall River, Massachusetts, and whereas we, the Town Council of Tiverton, wish to express our heartfelt admiration and congratulations on this momentous occasion, now therefore be it proclaimed that the town of Tiverton hereby recognizes and celebrates the 100th birthday of Victor Ferland on this day, March 24th, 2025.
(applause).
(inaudible).
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 So the President has, do you want to say a few words, sir?
Do you want to say anything?
Do you want to say anything, sir?
Oh, it's nice to be seeing people, not looking at me in the casket.[234.16][234.16](laughter).
(laughter).
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 All right. Exactly, exactly. Now, one of the consent agenda, quite a few things here. So, approval of Town Council minutes, February 24th, 2025, regular session, same day, executive session, acknowledged receipt of minutes from boards and commissions and committees, personnel board five, litter control one, open space and land preservation one, economic development one, harbor and coastal waters management one, acknowledged receipts of receipt of reports, excuse me, treasurer Sorette, budget and revenue reports, February 2025, school department year-to-date budget versus actual reports, February 2025, acknowledged receipt of correspondence, Catherine Peruzzi, Friendship Farms slash Comprehensive Housing Laws, Dan Darren, proposed trash slash recycling changes, Town of Portsmouth, resolution in support of the restoration of general revenue sharing to cities and towns, the same from the Town of Middletown, Town of Middletown, resolution in support of Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns 2025 legislative priorities, Town of Westerly, resolution in support of the restoration of the general revenue sharing to cities and towns, Town of Narragansett, same, the same Town of Woodsocket, the same, Town of Charleston, resolution in support of HB 2025 H 5315, an amendment to allow for the temporary service of elected officials after retirement, Town of Charleston, resolution in support of an amendment to allow the towns of Burrville and Gloucester to publish notice of their official actions in any newspaper of other designated platform of greater reach, Town of Lincoln, resolution in support of the restoration of general revenue sharing to the cities and towns, Town of Lincoln, resolution in opposition to Rhode Island 2025 gun control legislation, approval of fire department budget transfers, $4,600 from account 3310-6968, medical physicals to account 3310-7530, software maintenance, $3,600 from account 3310-7611, fuel, oil, tires to account 3310-7530, software maintenance, tax collector McGowan, approval of uncollectible tax abatements in the amount of $33,994.26, DPW Director Rogers, request permission to submit RITD's MS4 2024 Annual Report to RITM. Would any councilors like to remove any items from the consent agenda? Counselor Janik.
D5.
D12.
Counselor Comito, D12. Any other councilors? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Okay, Counselor Janik.
D5 is a resolution of the Town of Middletown in support of Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns 2025 legislative priorities. They do talk about supporting a robust local government funding through municipal aid programs, education and grants, especially related to workforce management and personnel costs, businesses licensing and regarding land use, and I feel that this is important for the Town of Tiverton, and I would like to ask the solicitor to draft a resolution from the Town of Tiverton to mimic or mirror the Middletown one.
Wonderful. I think Mr. Solicitor has the direction, thank you, sir. All right, Counselor Comito.
D12 is the Town of Lincoln, they have a resolution in opposition of the Rhode Island 2025 gun control legislation. I also feel that, I had a couple of phone calls on this, probably five or six, and I would like to join on the bandwagon, this resolution in support in opposing the gun laws that they're trying to change and taking away the rights of gun owners.
Okay, Counselor.
I'd like to have the solicitor join that resolution if we all agree.
I second that.
All right, so no formal motions needed, but the solicitor will prepare a resolution for us to discuss in the next meeting.
Thank you.
All right, next up is public comment, do we have anybody signed up, Madam Clerk?
To approve.
Oh, sorry, I need a motion to approve D5 and D12.
Motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion been made, seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? No opposed, all right. First up on public comments, Sanford Mantell, Water Department Merge and Trash Program. Is Mr. Mantell present? If you could just please state your name and address for the record.
Sanford Mantell, Budway, Tiverton, Rhode Island. I see from the agenda that the trash proposal is an ongoing, okay, is an ongoing program.[571.16][571.16](laughter). So I got a few questions, more of a financial nature. What's the annual revenue from the bag program currently?
Would you like me to address that?
Yeah.
Sure. So $310,000 from the bag program goes into the general fund, the remaining balance goes in to close the gap that we still have to close the landfill.
That's my next question, what's the unfunded landfill liability?
Off the top of my head, it's approximately 1.4 million.
Okay, and if we go with the new $100 assessment, what's the annual revenue going to be from that program?
For full disclosure, the council is not, just has not reached any sort of financial discussion.
I understand it's an ongoing program, so, but again, maybe you can't answer this one either. So with the budget coming up shortly, what's the benefit of the new trash program costwise to the town?
So, again, very preliminarily, the current trash contract is going to cost us approximately 1.2 million, switching to an automated collection, as was proposed to us, was for 1.3 million, so $100,000 delta, and the goal would be that it is a net-net the same or offsets more of the contract, at least from my perspective.
So basically, net zero.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, the other question I have was the Water District, I know there seems to be a sense of urgency to merge the two districts, will the district, merged district be a quasi-public entity or a town department?
So, I can't answer that, correct?
You couldn't answer it.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I can't answer it.
Yes.
The only thing that has been submitted is legislation, a resolution to the General Assembly to move forward, or at least study the issue, there are no final decisions that have been made yet, so, you know, that's up at the legislature, because they're both quasi, they create, excuse me, both water districts are creatures of the General Assembly.
Right.
So, you know, whether it goes forward, how they go forward, that's really going to be up to them, I'm sure they're going to ask for some town input, but we're not nowhere near that yet, based on my understanding.
All right, just a follow-up then, why is it necessary to merge them?
That was a resolution of the council.
Well, I know, but why?
I mean.
It's up to you, I mean.
So, my understanding is that the reason why this went forward to the state at this time was, according to the council, was an informational, to gather information on putting these two entities together.
Yeah, but what's the purpose?
I don't know the purpose, I didn't vote for it, but all I know is that it failed that night because it was just gathering information, it was explained to me that they want to send this to the state to gather information on how the process works, how we join something together, and I think the intent is improvement of our water system. That's what I got out of the meeting, and that's all the information I have on it.
Well, I've just come out from winter hibernation, so this is kind of like a new to me, but that still doesn't answer the question, what's the advantage of merging them?
I don't think this is the time, this is the time for you to be speaking, not for us to be answering questions.
Well, no, I'm asking the question, I'm not disputing whether or not it should be merged, I'm just asking why.
Again, this is not for us, we shouldn't even be talking back to you at all, this is an opportunity for you to be speaking.
I can answer the question, it's long-term sustainability of effective and efficient clean water throughout the Town of Tiverton. If you look at all of our bordering neighboring towns, they all have significantly higher populations, they all have one water district, we have, we have three, we have three, so it's to.
We have two.
We have three, because there's wells in South Tiverton, that would be considered a separate one, but, so, okay, there's two. Newport has one, Bristol has one, much larger towns with much more population have one water district, so its economies of scale, its effectiveness, efficiency, long-term, right?
Okay.
Maybe North Tiverton has paid for a bunch of infrastructure, we get that, we're not trying to put a burden on North Tiverton in any way, but it's about the whole town rising together and having, maintaining and sustaining clean water. We don't have the ability at the Town Council here to merge the districts, we don't have the ability to say, "Don't merge the districts." The decision is made at the state level, simply what this council did was give the state permission to analyze and pursue whether that is the right thing to do, the wrong thing to do, fiscally, financially, operationally, you name it, right, across the board, so we've looked at all aspects, we've tossed it over the fence to the state, who is the person who, they are the team that will be able to solve this for us if there is something that needs solving, and just to give you a little bit more background, we have, the two districts that we're discussing here have different models where they report back to us on concerns, needs, issues, and we're trying to line them up on the same model, which is called the hydraulic model, and so our team has worked to get that underway so we can get appropriate capacity analysis back and make informed decisions, so that's why it was passed over the fence to the state, and we really appreciate everyone in the town's concern on this, this matter.
Okay, that makes sense.
We all deserve clean water, right, everyone's in agreement that we should have water in Tiverton, right, and it should be drinkable for our children and our family, okay.
That makes sense, okay.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Man.
Thank you.
Paul LaRue, Water Department merger.
Much better explained than, that's a path I was going down, thank you.
I know you were.
Ladies and gentlemen, I also would like to acknowledge that.
Sorry, name an address for the record, please.
Paul LaRue, General Manager, I live in Westport. I acknowledge that it's also good to be seen not in a casket.[942.32][942.32](laughter). Okay, the first thing that struck me was the acknowledgement of letters from, on your list on the agenda, I know there was a ton of correspondence that went to you from NTFD customers that wasn't acknowledged, I'd like to acknowledge and thank my customers for providing that correspondence to you to let them know I appreciate what they did. In general, it's unanimous that no one sent a letter saying, "Yeah, it'd be a great idea to merge." The second letter that wasn't discussed was the letter that I sent with impact costs, and these are just the costs caused by the town as a result of this merger, in the amount of $873, excuse me, $873,866 which will be billed to the town as a result of this merger, and that's just to get the two districts to function together, that's not any upgrade, it's basically, we've got metering systems that are vastly different, we've got accounting systems that are vastly different, all the reports that we have with the state will all have to be regenerated at quite a significant cost. I would like that you folks would bring that up in the meeting to discuss whether you're going to pay or not, I mean, we're going to bill you anyway, but, so, I wanted to make that public. The other thing, just in listening to the discussion that was just had, the resolution that the town passed was not to study anything. It's resolved that the Tiverton delegation to the Rhode Island General Assembly take all appropriate legislative action necessary for a merger of the two water districts. I mean, you pass, you want it merged, you don't want it studied.
That legislative action includes the analysis, so it doesn't say to pass it, and just to make a comment, you said that we didn't acknowledge any of your letters coming in, I have responded to every single email that I have received, in regards, in regards to this water.
Yep.
Subject, I have put lots of thought into my responses, and I think some of the people who submitted them have actually emailed me and even thanked me for the time that I put into those emails, so we are responding, we're not just throwing them.
I didn't see it on the agenda.
Okay. My email responses don't go on an agenda, so that's why they would not be there, sir.
You folks supplied us with liaison Craig and Denise, I requested that, Craig asked the Town Council to supply me with the real reason why you want this merger, because none of the things that you mentioned, the resolution, actually hold any water, we have clean water, it's not a problem of not having clean water. I also asked that all the information that you folks had gathered prior to making this resolution be provided to me, Craig said, Craig said he didn't have anything, I don't know if you folks have something, or if you don't have anything.
Paul, excuse me.
Yes.
I don't know what we're trying to prove here.
Right.
My correspondent, we have a meeting tomorrow, correct?
We have a meeting, yes.
Okay. All the information that we have right now, we're just trying to gather information, it's been very difficult to get information from, I'm talking sitting in this seat, I don't know how many people you've talked to, I don't know how many people Stone Bridge has talked to, I have zero information sitting here in this seat. So, I can't answer your questions if I don't have any information, it seems like you're trying to prove a point of being disgruntled, or saying that we're not trying to work, or talk about the information.
It's not there at all.
Okay, because I want to take offense to that. I am trying my best to gather all the information, and my first meeting is tomorrow, so the public knows, is with you and Denise, and I also believe the administrator is going to be involved to sit down to meet with you so we can have a conversation and discuss what the issues are.
What I was asking for, Craig, is prior to making this resolution, what research was done before you put it up?
And I don't disagree with you, and I think people know how I voted, and so.
It's not how you voted, it's how the Town Council.
Okay.
Came to this resolution.
So, the problem is, is that I am now trying to lead and take charge and collect this information so we can bring it back to my council and look at it, without doing that first, the procedure was not correct in my eyes, I can't speak for the council, but here we are, but I feel like we're already kind of starting off on the wrong foot, like, it's just, let's have a meeting, let's work, let's talk tomorrow, let's work before we start spiting and casting and saying, I didn't pass on any information.
That's not what I'm saying at all.
It sounds like it's what you're saying, so I'm just, let's meet tomorrow and go over everything, before we start shadowing, casting, and everything out, and making false statements.
Okay.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
If a merger was approved.
Yep.
Would you spearhead it, and would you help us merge the two districts?
No.
Exactly, thank you, sir.
So, looking at the real reason, I have to draw my own conclusions, you folks have a deal working in industrial park with Jim Long, I'm also working with Jim. 10 years ago, when we upgraded Fish Road, we upgraded the utilities to a larger size to accommodate the industrial park. Prior to that, Stone Bridge in the early 20s was supplying the industrial park with water. When the Tiverton power plant would turn on, the range of school would be without water. They tried to work around, tried to get Tiverton power to fill at night, was still a problem. Now we have Jim Long, who's got Longplex, and there's a few other people there, we're supplying them water. If a water tanker turns on a hydrant too fast, it sets off the alarm for their sprinkler system. The only hope the industrial park has of getting water is from us. Now, you might say, but Stone Bridge has a valve that they can turn on and give additional water, it doesn't work that way, only because our pressure is higher, and the water would flow out, not in, so Stone Bridge really can't supply any water to them.
So you're admitting we have a problem with our water in town, right?
I'm admitting.
You just said three times there's a problem, if you turn a valve, there's a problem, if there's a problem over here, a school doesn't have water, but you're unwilling to look for a solution, sir.
Well, so, slow your roll, I said when Stone Bridge was pumping, there was a.
Mr. LaRue, if I could just interject here, and again, we typically allot three minutes for people to come up for public comment.
Yep.
We're approaching six minutes now, and I understand that, you know, some of your time was taken back by the council, but it would be helpful for the length of our agenda if we could move this along, so the others who have signed up to speak will have an opportunity as well.
Okay, if I could, tomorrow night, we have an emergency meeting of the Board of North Tiverton Fire, everyone's invited, everyone on the council's invited, also stipends, it's become a tempest in a teapot, if, I can tell you what they are now, if you want to allot me one more minute, moderator makes $1,379.20 twice a year, treasurer, $1,379.20 twice a year, tax collector, $830.45 twice a year, the clerk makes $830.45 twice a year, all other tax assessors make $711.39 twice a year. The positions are open to all.
This is exactly what we don't need, is a Facebook argument coming to be professional in like this atmosphere.
Well.
We don't need a Facebook argument coming, let's sit down tomorrow, let's talk, let's have a healthy meeting, and leave Facebook out of the chambers.
I agree. But it's been.
If you agree, you're here saying it.
It's been requested.
Not officially, it hasn't, Facebook has nothing to do.
David.
It was part of a records request, but a records request doesn't come by response this way, so.
Thank you. Jeff LaChappelle, Florida Department.
Wish me luck.
Just name an address for the record, please.
Jeff LaChappelle, 36 Last Street.
I'm being hype guy.[1548.41][1548.41](laughter).
Thank you, Mr. Verland.
Thank you.[1553.13][1553.13](applause).
was already passed, that's why, I understand, why is the meeting tomorrow, it should have been beforehand, that's all, I think, no, no, I'm just, I just wanted to say that, that's all, okay. All right, I know you were, no, no, I know you were, I just wanted to say that, no, I just wanted to say that, all right, all right, ready? Good evening, members of Tiverton Town Council, I urge the council to rescind Resolution 2025-006, a resolution requesting legislative action concerning Tiverton's water districts and authorities. The resolution was passed without sufficient consultation or information posing risk to our town's infrastructure and future. Despite requests from Patricia Hilton, Tiverton Planning Board, and Ashley Sweet, Senior Planner Western Sampson, to wait for Stone Bridge Water Department's hydraulic model, some council members proceeded prematurely. Public concerns like those raised by NTFD General Manager Paul LaRue were ignored, and combining, the districts would divert resources from maintaining current NTFD infrastructure. Councilmember Deb Genix questioned the resolution's rationale, noting the lack of critical information in consultation with North Tiverton and Stone Bridge Water Departments, this oversight undermines transparency and civility. A conflict of interest also clouds the resolution, author-council president John Edwards recused himself due to his mother, Donna Edwards, being a Stone Bridge Board Member. The resolution passed narrowly, three to two, with councilmember Denise DiMederos absent. After the passage of the Resolution 2025-0006, Representative Jay Edwards, John Edwards' father, demanded extensive documentation from the North Tiverton Fire District during a monthly meeting on March 11th to fast-track his legislation, dismissing legitimate concerns of NTFD customers and board members. Representative Edwards justified the resolution by claiming he thinks it would simplify water and access to new developments, and that is why the Town Council is doing it. However, when confronted with the reality that merging both districts does nothing to supply additional water capacity to the entire town, he dismissed the future problem for others to handle, saying, "We probably won't be here once dissolved." When told it would be our customers' problems, he went on to ask how much we got paid to sit on the board. His attitude is not only irresponsible, but also deeply concerning for the long-term well-being of our town and its residents. Our water departments are vital for maintaining and upgrading infrastructure, dissolving or merging them without a clear plan will harm our community. I urge the council to rescind Resolution 2025-006, have Town Council's liaisons engage with both water departments, gather necessary data, and prioritize Tiverton's residents. Thank you, Jeff LaChappelle.
Thank you. Jamie French, same topic.
Jamie French, same topic.
It's lucky I don't have far to go. Hi, Jamie French, I live at Craig Avenue, and I want to talk about water, but I want to, I have a slightly different issue with the water. It, we, you know, we have a lot of current issues with our infrastructure of water in the northern part of Tiverton. And that being that in the development prior to the 1970s, all the marshes and streams, the brooks, the swamps, were all put underground in piping. And that piping is breaking, no one even knows where that piping is. But immediately after that piping was put in, and houses and marshes were filled in, and houses were put on top of these marshes, built on top of them, a lot of houses began having issues with their basements flooding, and they were pumping 24/7/365. And for that reason, the town of Tiverton had to build storm drains, not to carry storm water, but to carry the groundwater that's flooding people's homes. Now, over the years, we've had more issues. Some people, at, so, one house actually has water now bubbling out of their yard, which, and they lived there for 16 years. Another family was pumping 24/7 until they had to go into an expensive French drain, their whole yard, and then they had to come to Tiverton, and they had to hook into the storm drain. Now, I've watched swamps by my house get maybe three or four times larger in the last few years, and they're beginning to get into people's yachts. And we have so much water, my ground, my groundwater comes out of my Perk Test pipe. And I have, you know, it's, it's, there's so much groundwater. And, and you say, well, development would be good if they dug some wells, it would dry us out. But Tiverton doesn't want any wells in North Tiverton, we want to merge the districts, which only seems to make more issue because we're not looking at the current problem. Tiverton wants to hire a hydrologist to look at South Tiverton to make sure that they have water in the future, but no one wants to look at the problem currently. The people last year on Bend Den, Bear Den Road came here and complained that they can't use their wells anymore because of groundwater that has polluted their wells, and their wells are no longer potable. Now, it's only a matter of time that people between the ponds are going to have issues as well, because we keep developing right next to those wetlands. So instead of cre- instead of us looking at our current infrastructure problems and our current infrastructure issues, we're not, we're thinking about the future, the future development, we're talking about South Tiverton and the, the quality of the wells. I have so much water that passes over my yard, I could probably in a week's time fill one of those gigantic tanks up. If you walk down in North Tiverton and you walk over storm drains in time, in, in, in dry periods, you can hear water flushing through those storm drains. On top of it, DEM, in 2010, DEM identified raw sewers coming out of the storm drain on the Robert Gray District, and told Tiverton to clean it up, because someone, because, see, and, and that neighborhood, they hooked their, when they put in the storm drains, the neighbors directly hooked their sump pumps directly into those storm drains.
Ms. French.
Except someone hooked in sewage. It's been 15 years, and we have yet to do that. There was, there is people on Bay Street that have, have water crossing their yards that has, that has sewage in it, but nothing is being done. So if we're going to talk about water, why don't we talk about the issues we are facing today and not think about making issues worse? Because it's not, help, it, it, talking about merging the water for the future does nothing for what we have issues today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maureen Morrow, Fogland. This is a little fragile, okay. Hi, everybody, Maureen Morrow, Peaceful Way in Tiverton. I saw on the agenda that the Recreation Committee is proposing what they're calling a summer series at Fogland Beach, and I am speaking in support of that. I do want to encourage the Recreation Committee and the town, as they consider this, to think about the fragility of Fogland Beach, its dunes, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a pristine place, there have been a lot of volunteers over the years that have worked really hard to keep it clean with routine litter pickups. So I just ask, if you go ahead and approve this, that there be some guardrails in place for a complete cleanup after, to consider, you know, really trying to keep people off the dunes. And the only other suggestion I have is that there were eight nights proposed, and I, it might be good to start with a few, fewer, and see how it goes, and that would be, those are my comments.
Thank you.
This is going to go through the door.
It's, yeah, it's just going to vanish into the, into the thing. Ron Marsh, regarding trash collection.
My name is Ron Marsh, I live at 48-4 Rodway in Tiverton. What I have to say will be brief, it will be non-confrontational, I will not be asking questions of the council, and I will, I won't be extemporizing, I'll be reading a statement. This regards the front page article in a recent Siconnet Times that reads, "Tiverton Looks to Dump Pay as You Throw." Instead of the current system of purchased red bags and individual blue bins for recyclables, the new system would allot to each household 65 or 95 gallon wheeled buckets that are pushed to the road for collection every week. For a majority whose dwellings are on paved roads, this may appear reasonable and doable. But it happens that I live, together with eight other households, in a small development of homes off East Road that is not serviced by town vehicles. We transport our trash bags and recyclable bins to East Road each week. For me and other households, that's a drive of a quarter of a mile in the car. Now, the wheeled containers being proposed do not fit into an automobile. It's, so it would be close to an impossibility if we had to push 95 gallon buckets on dirt roads every week to East Road and back, and most of us are seniors. So I would like to suggest that prior to making a decision, the council determine how many Tiverton residents are in a position like ours. We hope that you can accommodate our needs for trash and recyclables pickup in a way that does not impose undue and impractical burden. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. We have one late addition, Mr. Darin, also regarding trash.
Thanks, thank you, council members, my name is Dan Darin, and I'd like to build on the last gentleman's comments regarding the current system of trash and recycling. I sent a letter, pardon me, to the town council about a week and a half ago, which two of the members were nice enough to, to reply to, it's Mr. Hayden, you know, we had a nice conversation, including about, everything about tear gas and nerve gas, but anyway. Well, all, tear gas is banned in wartime, but law enforcement can use it in domestic situations, long story. Mr. Edwards was nice enough to respond as well. I think, I think what I'm here tonight to ask is, I know it's not on the agenda, but it is an item that is near and dear to my heart. I'd like you all, if you would, to keep an open mind, I think that's not much to ask. A, a week and a half ago, a week Monday, when I was driving to work, I substitute teach in Westport, I was trying to, Mr. Edwards was nice enough to respond very promptly. He's, by my reading, he, he had some very strong opinions. We, we discussed the tall, tall monstrosities, and on that day, with the wind and the rain, if I had time to photograph it, I would have photographed all the ones that had blown over and were spilling their contents. I'd like to, I live on Main Road, I live in Tiverton, so I live on the side of a ridge. Did I, did I mention that the, these bins have wheels, and in the wind, they're going to take off, and you, you wouldn't believe, you think that the current little bins for recycling are interesting in a blow, but these things have, I don't know if it's called high windage, the nautical term, but, anyway, is this okay, or, all right. They look pretty teetering tottering. I have a bit of a pitch to my driveway, and I'm 75 years old, and right now, I, I load a bin, a recycling bin and a trash bag into the car from my garage, I drive down the end of the driveway, get out with my two bad knees, and put the trash in the recycling there, and when I come back at the end of the day, guess what's there, an empty recycling bin, and the trash is gone. There's an old systems tenet that you do not change a system unless the new system will be orders of magnitude better than what you have, and I do not see this, this proposed system as being anywhere near orders of magnitude better. The existing system, to my mind, works. If you asked me personally, with no disrespect to anybody, I would say this new proposal is a problem, is a solution in search of a problem. And, and perhaps, if all you have is a hammer, most everything looks like a nail. There are a lot of good things that you folks could do. I thought I heard some numbers about a million dollars for the town to purchase trash and recycling bins, but that could be incorrect, it could be 600,000, 250,000. I can think of a lot better things to spend money on than trash bins and recycling bins when the existing system works well. I don't know that I've got a whole lot to say about that, but the, the, the bags work fine for me. I thought I understood that if you had the bins to begin with, which the town was going to buy for you out of taxpayer casino money, you still had to get a sticker to put on the side of the bin to tell the pickup people that you were, you were in the, you were in the club. Well, what do people do that don't want to pay for the sticker? Well, I suppose they could go back to the old way, you know, get a 55 gallon drum and just burn it, or, or maybe throw it in the woods, there's plenty of that stuff, too. Once again, it ain't broke, to my mind, don't fix it, looks like a solution in search of a problem. I know some of you seem to have very strong opinions and do not seem amenable to be swayed. I would simply ask you to keep an open mind, and I appreciate your time, thank you. Oh, Dan Darin, 1542 Main Road, Tiverton, 02878-4417, USA Earth Solar System, Kuiper Belt, Urch Cloud, Orion Arm, Milky Way Galaxy, Local Subcluster, Virgo Supercluster. It's important to know where you're on the universe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Darin.
I do live on the side of a ridge.
I just wanted to make more comments, sir, on your orders of magnitude, where, where the streamlining is really coming in.
There it goes.
We are fixing that, I promise, it's, it's underway. Where, where the orders of magnitude come in is, you notice that the trash men get out, and they have to manually pick up the bags and throw them into the back. There's going to be significant automation where the truck can attach to the barrels and put the trash in, so there are significant savings on the contract with the vendor due to that streamlining of the process. So I just, I just wanted to, you know, put that in your mind, and I very much enjoyed reading your email.
Oh, thank you.
It was, it was very well-written.
Well, interestingly enough, Portsmouth just went to this kind of a system, and I don't know who's buying the bins, but they're charging 460 dollars a year to, to have your trash. It reminded me of when we were selling our house in Ipswich, Massachusetts, and we had to get a septic system, and there, in the 11-plus acres that we had, there was only one teeny little corner where it could place that septic system, and my wife kept railing about, it's something called Title V there, it's, we also used to call it the excavation contractors full employment act. She never appreciated the fact that we had to pony up 60,000 dollars and go through unbelievable groups of, war health and everything else, 48, something in which to drop extra money. She used the word, starting with S H in the E R, but anyway, double D, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Darin?
Sir.
Thank you for the commercial break.
All right. Ms. Morrow, the balance of your time is yours.
All right, I'll be very quick, I just have to respond that this issue with trash and recycling is a problem that needs a solution. It's not search, it's not the opposite. We have a terrible problem with our recycling bins and the contents being blown all over town, and I really want to encourage everybody, take a look at Bulgarmarsh Road, take a look at Fish Road, take a look at any of the roads. The bins are overloaded, well-meaning residents just fill them up, put them at the end of their driveway, sometimes the night before, and the next morning, they're all over the road. And I want to remind people, nobody picks up that litter from the town, that's not part of DPW, it's volunteers who get tired of looking at the milk containers and the cans and the wrappers who go out and clean it up. There's no more help from the state, so it's volunteers, it's a human who decides to go and pick up trash. So we do need a solution to that problem.
Thank you.
If the bins are out in the morning, the critters of the night will not be there blowing stuff.
If I, if I may, Mr. President, so, just so everyone knows, and I've been in, I've spoken to the council and the council president, so this way, people are always free to come to all the meetings and talk about the issues that face their community. And it seems like over the past couple meetings, water and trash, I've learned more about that in my three months as administrator than I probably want to know. But it is a serious issue because it impacts us. And I can speak for the council, and I've been authorized by the president, to start a citizen survey before we do anything else. I think it's important that all of you have a voice, and that the council gets the best available data that they can before they make these decisions. I can assure you, and I'm speaking on behalf of the council, we don't want to ready, shoot, aim anything, and I know there's been a lot of allegation, I know there's been a lot of frustration and emotion, I can speak for myself, what I'm trying to do is calm everybody down. So this way, everyone has a voice, and that we're doing and making these policy decisions in the best interests of the town and not in any individual interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. All right, next up, we have public hearings, discussion of possible votes, approval of-
I just wanted to ask a question, if you don't mind.
Yes, by all means, please, please come up to the microphone.
Meredith Mucci, East Road, Tiverton, but just about how it works, because there was something I would like to say about, I've been to the planning meetings, and I've heard some of the impact studies on some of the developments that are being proposed, and I don't know if town council is someplace where we're also discussing them, because not everybody goes to the planning boards' meetings, and I didn't know if this was the right place to bring those things up.
The solicitor is saying it is the planning board's domain.
Impacts, there are certain criteria that the, that the developer would have to meet under the standards, and that's all determined by the planning board, obviously if-
It was just that his impact study said that someone was going to make a profit, but the city was going to have to cover 800,000 dollars a year in taxes.
That is true, that was, I, I know what developer you're talking about, but that, that is true, but that is not a reason to deny an application.
No, but I just didn't know if it was something that the people at large, who come to council meetings but not planning board meetings, should hear.
I saw the letter, I don't know, I don't know if your numbers are accurate, I don't want to say, I, I don't know if it's 800,000, but yes, that, they did submit a, a proposal that indicated that because of the potential influx of student-
It just breaks my heart for like, because I think when we look around this room, we see mostly people with at least moderate income and not high income, and it's about to become less affordable to live in Tiverton because somebody's going to make a profit, and I actually like, is upsetting. So, again, I won't take up any more of your time, and I will continue going to those meetings.
It's important, you do, just so you know, but financial gain or loss is not a valid reason to deny a project, so I just want to make that clear, so.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so approval of the proposed amendment to the Tiverton-
Mr. President, I, can I have just one?
Yes, Mr. Perry.
Right there, Mr. Cometto, were you involved in the casino when it was being built?
No, I was not.
You weren't? Okay. Do you know what kind of water system they put in there?
Oh, that part I do know, yes.
Do they have their own water system?
So I believe they get- So I believe they get water from, they have a large tank and they refill it at night.
All right, I gotta, um, we gotta cut this off.
We are way off the agenda topics.
Yes.
Well, I know, but we were talking about water districts. We're not talking about individual, individual, we're not talking about an entity, like we're talking about the merger of districts, but you're asking a very specific question that's not on the agenda regarding a water system that, uh, we have.
If, if there's interest, we can put it on the future agenda.
I just don't want to get a follow-up, we're kind of on the edge.
All right. So approval of the proposed amendment to the Tiverton Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6, Alcoholic Beverages, Section 6-9, number of licenses this proposed ordinance will amend. Be Class A retail sale, maximum number of licenses as governed by Rhode Island General Law's 3-7-3, and remove the current maximum cap of three licenses and allow additional licenses to be issued based on the town's population as determined by the census. Since this is a public hearing, I will now open the public hearing. Would any members of the public like to speak on this proposed ordinance change? Any members of the public? Last time, any members of the public? All right, with that being, oh.
Did you say, uh, again, Meredith Mucci, you said, um, did you say that you're opening it up to more licenses?
Correct.
All right. I'm a support.
I like to make the motion to approve 6A.
Hold on, hold on, all right, all right, hold on. Let me, let me, we gotta close the public hearing first, then we can get to the council comments. I'll go left, uh, right to left, if that's all right, and then we'll, next one we'll go the other way. Um, so no other members of the public like to comment? Okay. With that, I would like to now close the public hearing. Members of the council, Councilor Cometto, would you like to add anything? Councilor Hayden?
I'd like to make a motion to approve 6A as stated in the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Now for discussion. Councilor Janik?
No.
Councilor Demidaris?
I used to know this, but I forgot because I, there's too much knowledge. Um, how many licenses would this allow? Like, what is the law? It would be just one more, right?
One more, yeah, but it will, but it, yes, as written.
One more right now.
Correct, as written.
And the census goes up.
Correct. So this, if you recall, back in January, I gave the council a memo on this. There were two options. One was to increase it to reflect the current population and cap it at four, or the other option was to allow it to float with the population increase automatically. And the council at the time indicated they wanted to, uh, let it float automatically with the population. So based on Tiverton's current population, you can add one more, Class A, and then when you get over 20,000, 20,000 residents, we'll, we'll look at it, but it'll be automatic. We wouldn't have to come back to the council and amend the ordinance again. So that was what the council instructed me to do.
I understand what you're just meaning.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And if it goes down, we would lose one.
Uh, but you can't take a license away, so.
Correct. It's a little gray area, what happens when you drop down, but yes.
Got it.
I don't think it's going to down.
No, I don't think so either, but I'm just saying.
Okay, so, um, because I'm the chair, I get to go last. Uh, my opinion, this is a good thing. Um, the legislation is written in such a way that actually, once you get over 20,000, it becomes some weird formula, and I think we'd essentially be at four until we hit something like 30,000 residents, if you do the calculation, so. But in the, in the meantime, there's been interest for, uh, from two other people to apply for these licenses, so, um, you know, I'm in support of, of us passing this. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? None opposed? All right. Next item for public hearing is Cultural Survival, Candace Testa, approval of sound variants for Cultural Survival Bazaar at Tiverton Four Corners Art Center, 3852 Main Road, on July 23rd to 24th, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and approval of special event permit, which was not advertised. Since this is a public hearing, I will now open the public hearing. Any member of the public like to speak on this topic? Any member of the public? Any member of the public? All right, hearing none, we're going to close the public hearing. Uh, any questions from the council for, it is Candace, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion.
Uh, Councilor Janik?
You've done this a number of years?
Yes, so over 20.
20 years and it's all, everything's still in place as it's been? No issues?
No, no big changes. It's always been a success. We appreciate Tiverton's support for this event.
Thank you.
Councilor Demidaris?
And will there be a police detail there?
Yes, we had it for both days, uh, last year, and this year will be three days, so we'll have three days worth of detail.
Perfect, because the traffic there gets rough.
Councilor Hayden?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Cultural Survival, number 6B, as stated in the agenda.
Second.
All right, just to clarify, that motion is to approve the sound variants and also the special events permit?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Thank you.
None opposed?
Thank you.
Next item, council sitting as Board of Licensing, Michael Rodrick, requesting special event permit for Courtney Rodrick, Rodrick Run for Recovery on July 26th, 2025, from 8:00 AM to 11, 11, it should be AM, or AM, correct?
Yeah.
8 to 11, thank you.
That's a long run, John.
I was going to say, if it takes me that long to do a 5K, I'm in trouble. Um, so from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Uh, any questions from the council for Mr. Rodrick? This is an event that has happened.
Every year.
Every single year. Goes off without a hitch.
Eighth run?
If, if you'd, if you'd like, I think this would be a good opportunity to advertise for the run, so people know.
So we started the, the run in, I don't know, history-wise, if, what, what everyone knows, but we started the run in, uh, um, two, the first one was 2018. Uh, it's, it's a memory of my daughter, uh, and this is the eighth year, I think the COVID year, we had it, uh, online or whatever. Um, and so we, we, we run it every year. We usually raise, uh, yeah, we usually raise about $10,000 or more. One year we raised $16,000 and it goes to a different recovery house every year. Um, so, uh, we kind of got it down to science now, you know, we got, we got, um, we use the, the, uh, uh, South Coast parking lot there, we set up there. We start and the run starts there and then it goes counterclockwise, you know, down Main Road, Highland, and then back down to Main Road, and it's, it's a, it's a 5K run. So, um, we got, I already did, this year we, all the, the, uh, the checklist are all online, so I already bought the insurance, um, um, I got the approval, there's any, you know, I posted all that stuff on, on, online, and so.
Wonderful. And just for those at home who may be interested in running, what's the website?
Uh, so it's CourtneyRodrick5k.
Okay.
Yeah, CourtneyRodrick5k.com. Um, we got a good website.
Perfect.
Yeah. Yeah, we usually have about 120, 100, well, one year it was really hot, uh, one year, but, uh, usually we get about 80, 100 people out there, so.
Wonderful. Do I have a motion from the council?
And the, and the police department provide great support.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, 7, 7A, uh, with the change that it would be from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM.
Subject to meeting all, all legal requirements.
Yes, sir.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, my final bit of discussion is I challenge Councilor Hayden to run it with me.
You could run or walk, either one to get a tee-shirt.
I was going to challenge the whole table up here to join, so we get to 90 people instead.
I love it.
How's that?
Let's do it.
I'm just going to be honest.
You'll be walking?
Not going to happen.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Challenge accepted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodrick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is Library Director Demani, request approval of Class F one-day liquor license for fundraising gala event on Friday, May 30th, 2025. Uh, any questions from the counselor, council regarding this request? Uh, if not, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the Class F one-day liquor license for the fundraising gala for the Tiverton Library.
Seconded by Councilor Hayden and Councilor Janik. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? None opposed, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Let's go on now, Catherine.
Next item on the agenda is Director Rogers, discussion impossible vote to award the contract for specified recreational facility and turf management services bid for calendar year 2025 to Landscaping Services Incorporated, DBA DePont's landscaping in an amount not to exceed $63,700. Uh, you may want to have a seat there, Director Rogers, if there are any questions.
Sorry. Um, just, I know that this was a, an item on the last agenda. I did invite Mr. DePont, he's in the room, um, so if he wants to come up and approach the table, sit next to the director, in case the council has any specific questions for him as well.
Wonderful. Thank you for, uh, for taking the time to come.
It's interesting.
Yeah, we are.
The machinations of government are often exhilarating. Um, any questions from the council or do, for, uh, Mr. DePont or Director Rogers, or do we have a motion?
I just want to make sure the work that we're paying for is getting done. We driven by a few of the fields last year, some of them weren't, weren't mowed, you know, I think I'm not the only councilor who witnessed it, so we would love to hear from, from you and we appreciate you working for the town and, and keeping our, keeping our fields and everything mowed, so. That was, that was my one concern and that's why I think this got pushed from the last meeting, but other than that, appreciate all you do for the town.
Well, Mr. DePont is new to-
Correct.
Correct, yes.
This, this will be your first year doing this for us.
So that was what was happening with the previous vendor.
Correct, so-
Councilor Janik?
I'm sorry. Some of the, um, sports groups were coming out and mowing their own fields, um, because they weren't getting done, so we want to make sure that their fields are getting done on a regular basis and, so, because then they have to line them too, so.
Sure. All, all I can tell you is, and this is what I do for a living, in 2024, I maintain Bristol Warren Regional Sports Fields, Bristol Recreation, Portsmouth Abbey Sports Fields, the Town of Portsmouth Sports Fields, the Portsmouth School Department Sports Fields, so this is what I do.
And I did see, I did see on your list of all the ones that you did, and you have as part of your contract, all of the areas that are part of the contract.
I, I figured I was going to be facing these questions. Um, so I went through the contract and I tried to, and I clarified exactly what to expect from me, okay? And if you might, I'll pass these out.
That'd be great. Thank you for doing that.
Because I know some people are concerned, is it, are we going to deal with the infills? Are we going to deal with parking lots? Are we going to deal with our striping? So as I, behind it is the actual specs that we distributed and it discusses the pre-bid. And so the cover sheet is just my summary of, of what I'm expecting to perform. And if you, if you note in there, there's a few days where, I guess in the past, you haven't done the sports fields twice a week during the heavy springtime, so you'll see it all noted there.
Thank you for addressing that.
That to me is a summary of what was requested.
Councilor Cometto?
Yeah, so in the contract, it does mention about cutting twice at some of the fields, right?
You see that in that?
Okay. So our town farm recreation area is, um, it's probably one of our largest parcels that we have and our most used for soccer, sports, baseball, softball. Um, that seems to be where we've had most of our problems in the past with, um, the fields only getting done once a week, uh, the clumping of the grass, uh, it does get very wet there, so at times it becomes, it gets difficult to, um, keep up with it.
So that's, that's noted in there and, and if you notice it, and, but it's springtime only, it's from April through, um, June 30.
Right, okay. Um, and then the cleanups, a, a, as far as a standard procedure, I would assume your men do carry blowers to blow the grass off?
Yes.
The walking tracks of the field areas, um, things of that nature.
The cleaning of litter is a process that happens and you guys all suspected.
I noticed that, yes.
Prior to the cut.
Okay.
But with the fall and spring cleanup, there's only certain locations that are addressed.
Correct. Um, the only other thing that I would like to add to this, um, Mr. President, is the fire station on, um, Station 3.
So we can't, we, we can't, yeah, we can't add you because this is specific.
According to the contract, it says, once the contract takes place, that you can add a field.
That was clarified in the pre-bid. That was one of my pre-bid questions because it, it, there was a line that said, once the contract is added-
Right.
-that town of Tiverton could add as much as you want. And I said, that doesn't make sense. And they said, no.
Okay, so the problem is, is we have one-
If that's the fire station, and I might, not for me, because I handed out my copy to you guys.
Yes.
That, if that's the fire station behind the baseball field?
No.
Okay, then.
So there's a fire station on East Road, which, um, like, for years, there's been confusion about it. Um, e- either somehow or another, it's, it's, has been done through the town before, uh, but the fire department has to contact whoever the contractor is on their own to get it done. Um, I, I, I believe-
We, we haven't formally met with anybody from your, from your, your town yet, so that can all be, we could sit down and discuss these.
We can work something out.
But that currently is what we put it on, the paper you have in your hand.
Thank you. So, um, Mr. DePont first, uh, thanks for coming to the Spanish Inquisition. Um, I think it sounds like, uh, it sounds like there is some areas that we may want to, uh, do a change order after the bid and it's, from what I understand, it sounds like you might be open to that if there, we somehow did miss a field. I'm assuming there would be a cost for that, it wouldn't be included in the contract, but it's something that we could potentially revisit?
Yes.
Correct.
I'm not sure it's really a missed job, but I just think it needs to be added to.
Yeah. Goodness, the Rogers? Councilor Demidaris?
I, I just have a quick question. What is the Florence Street rec?
It's a field on Florence Street off of Stafford Road.
Used to be a ball field there. Just an empty field on, on the right-hand side.
Used to be used for soccer and T-ball.
Do we use it now, though?
I've used it for soccer.
We do, okay. No, I just wasn't aware of that one.
Councilor Paul, Councilor Perry, any questions? Councilor Paul?
I do. Mr. DePont, just to be clear, um, this has absolutely nothing to do with your company. You guys have a very reputable company. I worked in Bristol for quite some time. The questions we have here is a result of prior contractor, and to not fault him, I think he took a little bit more on than he could chew. But he was a fantastic guy, so it has nothing to do with him. One of my questions was rain. So one of the excuses last year was lots of rain, can't get the grass cut. Lots of rain, can't get the grass cut. And then it gets cut at six inches, and that's where the clumping came into play. So how do you guys handle rain? Do you cut through rain like they do down in Florida? Or do you guys don't cut through rain?
Typically, we watch the weather, and we have additional crews that are doing different tasks that we can bring in. We look at the grass maintenance part of a contract, because that has to be accomplished every Friday. It's a weekly set. So if it's a Tuesday, Friday schedule, and we see it's going to be raining on Tuesday, we'll jump it on Monday, or we'll jump it on Thursday or Friday. And we have additional crews that can step in and do that. We pull them from different tests.
Beautiful.
Counselor Perry, any questions? All right. Counselor, or, Counselor, you've been promoted, congrats. Director Rogers.
Just a few clarifications. Since I was at DPW, the fire station three has never been part of the contract. I'm not saying I'm against adding it to the contract, but it's always been the same contract of 100% run by the fire department. It's never been part of this contract.
That's why I said we had to call the same contractor. And I am proposing now it becomes part of the same contract.
And as I said, I don't have an objection to adding it. The second thing is, we did meet.
Yes, one of my representatives.
Yeah, one of your reps. Matt, we did a walkthrough as required. That was added this year to be done.
There was a mandatory pre-bid.
And the third clarification is, this is an award for specified recreational facility and turf management services. One of those items is mowing and trimming, and that's shown in the bid. That bid is 63,700. So I would not want it maxed out at 63,700, because that's only for the mowing and trimming. Additional services may be done as they've done, as they have been done in the past, for grounds labor, blonde infield mix, et cetera, et cetera. That's always the way it's been done since I've been at DPW. So it's just a clarification that the maximum may be acceptable to say for the mowing and trimming services of this whole bid can be capped at 63,700 for this calendar year. But if you cap the whole thing, then you would preclude being able to do any of the additional services that were bid. That would be done if the town wanted them, such as blonde infield mix, fertilization, lime, rolling, et cetera. And that's all spelled out in the bid sheet.
What we did, we gave a fixed price on those specifications, then we gave you unit prices on options.
Got it.
Same thing with that in the past.
Yeah, okay. All right, so with that being said, I'm looking for a.
Mr. President.
Yes, Counselor Hayden.
I'd like to make a motion to approve eight A as written in the agenda.
Well, that's going to conclude you from getting the per unit cost.
Yeah.
Right, it's going to, right.
So you want to prove it as bid.
Just approve the bid without the price.
Correct. Well, the bid is, sorry, the bid is for the grass, 63 whatever, but he has also given you a per unit cost. To the extent that you use those services, you want to get, you want the benefit of those per unit costs.
Those are optional à la carte services, correct? Okay, so.
I would assume we would be billed when those services take place.
On court.
Correct, yeah.
But you can't be billed until it happens.
But you can't, unless you, correct.
He's just holding these prices in the contract.
So can you repeat the verbiage you need again, Mr. Solicitor, for the motion?
So you're going to approve the bid as submitted with the grass provision not to exceed 63, whatever that number is, and then for the unit prices to be adopted as submitted.
That's the motion I'd like to make.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by several counselors, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Camino.
So we're going to have the discussion of adding the fire station, correct?
Once the bid is accepted and approved, I think the contract indicated he would sit down with Rick, and obviously that's going to be an additional cost, because you're adding something that was, it's a change order.
Well, he might, out of the kindness of his heart, just add it to, it's a small area.
Yeah, you definitely didn't want to come to this meeting tonight.
It would be a change order that.
All right, thank you.
We can put that on a future agenda, correct, and get that added.
Or they can give the director the ability to do so.
Okay. Any further discussion, Counselor Janik?
Do we have to do that? We don't have to do that now?
I would not recommend doing that now.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Thank you all, thank you, Mr. DePond.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DePond.
No kidding. All right, Recreational Chair Gilfillan, discussion impossible vote to hold Fogland Beach Sunset Series at Fogland Beach on June 24th, July 8th, 15th, 22nd, 29th, August 5th, 12th, 29th, from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m.
Hi.
Hello.
First things first, I want to thank Maureen for her feedback and her support. I do want to clarify, I think there's a perception that this is series, that it's the same kind of thing as what we did at Bogamash. It's not. So what we're looking at is essentially having one steel drum player and two, one to two food trucks. So far more low-key.
But you're still having the summer series at Bogamash.
Correct, yes, yeah, which was previously approved. We're not, we're not moving away from that. No, and the thought here was, so under Recreation's purview, we already can approve to have food trucks on the beaches in different times. We didn't want to do a larger scale activity, didn't feel like it was appropriate for there. So if anybody's familiar with the footprint of where the playground used to be at Fogland, there's just a big sandy area there, and what we would do is put a small section of stage, and then we would have one steel drum artist come in. It does need, does require minor amplification, I did clarify on that. So if there is a need to come back for a different type of approval, I'm willing to do that. But the decimal levels, I don't think exceed beyond what we're looking for, which is why I didn't initially submit it that way. So. There's no microphone.
It's on here, okay.
So the other thing that I did want to mention is, I think, to follow up on what Maureen had mentioned, I think there's a good opportunity here for us to not only make sure that we continue to be good stewards of the beach and the work that's being done there, but I want to actually take back to the Recreation Commission some suggestions and to potentially look at how we can do some education as part of this, of the restoration that's going on. So it's an opportunity to make an additional positive step in that direction. So, and I think in your packet, you have a sort of minor layout of what we're anticipating for.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Counselor Paul.
So a motion to approve the Recreation's Fogland Beach Sunset Series as the date as stated in the agenda.
Discussion.
Seconded by Counselor Perry, discussion, Counselor Janik.
I've gotten a couple of emails. People are concerned about the parking. Will you be limiting the parking and to what areas?
So at the moment, we are going to restrict the parking, and as you can see on the diagram there, the entrance into it, so that there's footpath. As far as other parking availability, we're going to work with the gate attendants just to make sure that if the beach is full, there's not additional space. So it's something that we're going to look at, and we can't go over capacity for it, but we're not going to cut down on what our normal capacity for the beach is.
What is the capacity for the beach?
It's about 200, and I think it's listed as 220, somewhere around there. What's that?
Vehicles. It's hard to believe.
That's what, and that wasn't something that I pulled, that was what would have originally been listed on the town's website. So could be less than that.
Can we get some clarification on that somehow? Because I've been over there fighting for a spot at Fogland, and I don't think, I don't think we can efficiently fit 220 cars in there. And then that brings up the question of if there are 220 cars in there, are the bathrooms and restrooms, are those adequate to handle that kind of, that kind of flow, no pun intended?
Sure, so the issue pertaining to facilities comes up every year. There are the ones within the bathhouse, which are, and we are monitored regularly. But one of the other things we've been in discussion with Directors Rogers about is where we could place additional porta potties further down the beach, which was in discussion even before this came up, because there were other issues that had arisen. So I think what you're going to see is there are going to be additional resources placed available in different spots, especially in the far end of the beach, and probably one in between. Something we're looking at to account for the issues we're having anyway.
Sure, and I appreciate that, but my comment would be to try to find some alternative to porta jones. They're just such an eyesore for such a beautiful, pristine area. And I have gotten complaints from a lot of the residents that if there's any way we could look at upgrading or doing something to have a little something nicer, that would be much appreciated in that neighborhood there. And then do we have police presence?
Yeah, so with every sort of interaction we do, we always connect with the police department. As far as facilities and upgrading, I would agree with you, and it's something that Recreation would love to move forward with. I think the two barriers candidly are, because you're on a beach, there are certain restrictions that come into play. And the second part is money. So we will look to provide whatever we possibly can, and I wholeheartedly agree with you. It'd be nice to have something better there. But what is there will meet the needs for this, the same way that the one at Bogamash does, although we have added additional porta potties, which we'd be happy to do if there's interest.
Counselor Paul.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, I have quite a few questions on this one, I'm sorry. So is no electrical needed? These are going to be unplugged, acoustic, steel drums? We're not going to have Dirty Deeds playing, you know, AC/DC electric guitars? It's just one drum?
It's, so to answer two different questions there, there will be a sort of a microphone to amplify his drums, but it is, and will only be one individual with steel drums. So there will not be any additional acts.
Okay, and this is the same?
Person?
Same person, and every Tuesday, every sunset series is going to be the same drum, same, okay, okay.
There aren't a lot of steel drum players out there.
Okay, well, that's it for me.
Can I finish mine?
Yes, Counselor Janik.
I wasn't done.
Sorry.
There'll be cleanup after, because the concerns are there are no trash cans there. So I know that you guys do a great job cleaning up at Bogamash after that, so.
Well, and we have, at Bogamash, and I need to credit certain counselors in particular for helping with this, with that. I think it's something that even with the concert series, we're looking how to improve, and we'll do the same thing with this particular activity, this event. So we have a really good setup that we can either duplicate or travel, and the process through which we'll make sure that the beaches are cleaner than when we started them.
I can assure you that Stu and his, and his team never leave until every piece of trash is picked up.
I know, it's late nights.
And we actually pick up trash that was there from other things, so.
Yeah.
So some of the residents are concerned that they will be, the road will be blocked, and they'll have difficulty if emergency vehicles need to go down, or can the residents get to their homes during that time?
Yep.
And will be assured that the roads will be open and accessible.
Yep. So what I can say is, that's something that we'll specifically address with the police department, to make sure that the remains a throughway?
And they will be there? There will be patrols there?
We are going to put in for patrol for every single show, the same we do with the concert series.
Because the concern from some of the residents I've heard from, because there's alcohol use at night, abuse at night, they want to make sure that that's not something during this series. So there will be police monitoring.
Counselor Janik, if I could just interject, because I saw some of those same emails about alcohol use. You're not permitted to have an open container on the beach, so if you're willing to take that risk, be aware, there's going to be a heightened police presence, you're probably going to have to pay a fine, if not something worse, so.
I understand that, but.
And that goes, that goes with Wednesdays, Thursdays, Fridays, any day of the week.
But that law is in effect every day of the week, but that doesn't mean that people aren't doing it.
Sure.
So this is just concerns from the neighbors.
No, it's fair, completely.
And I just want to make sure that we address their concerns. We have police. The noise is not going to be excessive, because it's going to be below the sound decibel, restrooms. And then what's involved with the setup? How early do you set up? It's just one drum?
My understanding is it only takes, maybe, he might have it set up about a half an hour before he goes on, but it's, there's not a lot to it. It's essentially just an iPad, and then the two drums, and then that's it. I think you might have a small table for water, but there's not, it's not a big footprint.
And they were concerned about if the concerts take place during high tide, will that alter any of the parking and/or the location of the concert, the concertgoers?
Nope, no, because we're not, where existing parking is will remain, we're not changing any of the parking places. And the playground location isn't affected by high tide currently, so it shouldn't be an issue. But what I, I'm sorry.
No, and then the last question was parking in the sand and getting near the sand dunes, having difficulty with cars getting stuck there, having to be towed out. And so the concern was just to stay away from the dunes.
I would offer that there are designated rules within current parking for the beach, and I'll be the first to admit that people tend to push that a little bit. I think this is an opportunity for us to be hyper vigilant with it. And I would also say that my hope with this, just like when we started doing the summer concert series at Bogamash, is that at the end of the summer, people have a very positive reaction to it, and that we're not, we're not creating any negative energy really around it. And I'd be very happy to share information, my contact information, it's pretty much everywhere now anyway, if people have questions as we're moving along. We want to be receptive to any concerns people have, and we want this to be something that the community can enjoy. But I can appreciate the concerns.
And well, and the rec commission does such a great job, and they've done such a great job on the Bogamash series. And I think that as long as they're monitoring and vigilant, it'll be better than the free-for-all that happens on some of the other evenings when no one's down there watching.
Yeah, and we have no delusions of this getting bigger. I think we're just looking at it as some great background music for people that are hanging out, watching the sunset.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. I have one final bit of discussion that I think needs to be brought in here. The Recreation Department has oversight of the beaches. So it's very important for those who have concerns to understand that the Recreation Department isn't going to go in and trash a beach, that they would then have to go maintain and fix and rehab. So with that being said, all those in favor? None opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Gilfillan. All right, next item on the agenda is Harbor Commission Chair Cox, discussion impossible vote to request draft amendments to the Code of Ordinances, Section 14-103, renewal of existing permits to amend the date from December 15th to January 3rd, to be consistent with the mooring service provider, and amend the notification process. This is strictly for advertisement, correct?
No, this is to ask if you want to go in this direction, so.
Okay.
No vote, but it's a recommendation, what you hear, the reason, I guess.
Okay, take it away.
Hi, I'm Dave Banya, the Assistant Harbor Master. Used to be the Harbor Master many years ago. So Section 14-103, right now, we have to send, we're supposed to send out renewal forms by December 15th. That hasn't been successful, especially with the new mooring contractor that we have, online moorings. It makes it much simpler to send it out after the first of the year. So we picked the date of January 3rd, so we'd like to change it from December 15th to January 3rd. And we're also like permission to send it out by email, which we're already doing anyways. So we'd just like to make it part of the code instead of just being general.
So can we get a vote on this this evening?
No, it's an ordinance, it's after the test.
All right, so with that being said, if, looking for a motion to, I guess.
If there's consensus that they want to do this.
All right, there's, I'm in favor of it personally, if it's going to make their life administratively feasible. I think you have.
I would just say, it says possible vote, that's why I thought you wanted us to vote to do it.
Vote to do it, can I ask me to do it right now?
Make a motion, Mr. President?
He doesn't need it, all right, so this will be on a future agenda to advertise it. Thank you very much.
All right.
Okay, next item from.
Same thing.
Yes.
Well, this is a little different.
This is, this is a discussion impossible vote to approve an increase in mooring fees.
Right, so the annual fees haven't been reviewed since 2017. So we've been having some issues with fees. I came on to help Tyler out, because there was a lot of lack of payment. There were payments missing from 2023, 2024, an administrative nightmare, especially with the new program. So I went and started to go after people and review the present fees. One of the problems is, right now, if you look, we use a boat length fee. So we have a standard fee, which is $25, and then we use the boat length. So not throwing anybody under the bus or anything, but people got wise to that. So I'll give you an example, myself, I own a 36-foot boat. My boat cost me over $100 a year because of the boat length fee. But if I was to register my dinghy to the mooring, I'd only pay $25. So it's happening right now, there's a lot of people doing that, registering small boats so that they don't have to pay the larger fee. So what we're trying to do is make it equal for everybody. Repararian, we've gone through this before. Repararian and repararian guest moorings, they're allowed to have either, if they have just a repararian mooring, they're allowed to have it vacant without a registration. If they're, if they have a second mooring, which they call a repararian guest mooring, they're also allowed to have that without a registration. If that's the case, and they don't put a registered vote on it, and we don't know what they're using the mooring for, we elected to charge them a little bit more, $100. If they don't, if they have a registered vote on it, they pay the same as any other resident in town, which is $75 for mooring. So that's the proposed. We also have this online moorings that I mentioned that was a little difficult for a lot of people. And we're working through that right now, and it looks like it's going to be a success. It's going to start to work the way it's supposed to. And I'm trying to get everybody to use it online. So it's becoming much more successful. But there's a charge for every mooring in town. So every mooring in town gets charged $7 fee for a mooring, whether it's a pulley mooring, whether it's a regular mooring, whether it's a repararian mooring, no matter what it is. We get charged, if someone's on the waiting list, we get charged $7 for each one that's on the waiting list, so on and so forth. So what we've elected to do is to raise like the commercial and non-resident fee, which used to be $325 to $335, to bring it up $10 to cover the online mooring fee. Pulley moorings paid nothing. As you can see, in 2017, they paid nothing. Pulley moorings now.
So on that, on that fee there that you're talking about, you added $10 to the out-of-town?
Yes, to non-resident as well as commercial. Commercial and non-resident pay the same fee.
Right, so, but you're not sharing that $7 cost evenly? It's just like you're having the people out of town or commercial fishermen pay for that $7 fee?
The regular moorings have gone up too.
I understand that, but to cover that $7 fee, you're charging just certain people and not everybody?
No, everybody's getting charged, that's what I'm getting at.
I thought you just said that you upped the fees for out-of-town from $325 to $3?
$35.
Right, to cover the $7 fee.
Correct.
For the residents. Is that what you said?
No, to cover the $7 fee that is charged from online mooring for that.
Okay, but everybody's going to pay the $7 fee?
Everybody's going to pay the $7. And what they've done, I don't know if you've looked at the budget proposals for the Harbor Department, but what they've done was they've separated, right now, when someone goes to online moorings to pay their mooring fee, they pay their mooring fee and a $7 fee on top of it. So say your mooring's 25, they pay $32 for the final, and then I think there's a $2 charge if they're paying online. They could write a check for that amount of money, give it to the town, and we can enter it. But anyways, that $7 fee is, you know, on there. What we're going to do is, we're going to have the town pay one fee, January 1, out of the harbor, out of the harbor budget, to pay all those mooring fees, those $7 fees upfront. Get them all paid for and out of the way with the budget. And then we're adding more here to compensate for that. So basically, it's still the same thing, it just comes out the other way.
I have a question.
I'm confused about that, go ahead.
Go ahead, absolutely.
One of my questions was, are we gaining moorings or are we reducing the number of moorings in town?
We have, we have more than we had in 2017. We had 384 in 2017, we got 413 right at the present time. Yeah, if you look at the sheet for the recommended ones, it shows you the total moorings. It also shows you the projected income based on what we have presently. And the online mooring service fees, 427, it's $7 each, that's right now 2989. So the net totals would be at the new rate, 51,136. And the projected income for 2025, based on present projections, is 45095. So it would be an increase to the general fund of approximately $6,041.
And you know what the average wait time is for someone on the waitlist? I see here you pay an initial $100 fee, but then $10 every year.
There's some people that have been on the waiting list. There's one gentleman that's been on the Tiverton Basin waiting list for a.
Close to 30 years, isn't it?
It's got to be close to 30 years, yeah.
He's paying $10 every year.
You have to understand, something that people have to understand when they go on the waiting list is the size of their vessel and the swing room of the boat that they're putting in. So what'll happen is somebody will give up a boat that had a 26-foot boat on it. This gentleman that's been on the list for 31 years has a 48-foot boat. So his swing room is much, much greater. We don't have a place to put that boat, so that's.
Tetris, basically.
That's why he's on that list for so long.
Understood.
Does anybody own or rent the mooring and not put their boat there all season? And let other people use their mooring?
I'm sure there are. We're not a. We're not a full-time harbor department.
Right.
Like Portsmouth, like Bristol, so on. And because of that, we don't spend as much time on the water daily like they do. And because they spend time on the water daily, this program is great because it has an app on the phone that the harbor master can use. And he can go up to the mooring and say, oh, that mooring, nobody's looked at it. He can check it off, nobody's gone there, check it off. Every day he checks it off, nobody's been on it for 30 days. He could contact the guy and say, hey, why do you have a mooring and you don't have a boat on it?
Right, and that mooring can go to somebody on the list?
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct, but because we don't have.
Well, to follow up on that, am I reading this correctly? You don't need a boat to get a mooring?
No, you're supposed to have a registered boat to have a mooring. Correct, except if you're a repararian.
So that, so the other question I would have then is, you had mentioned that somebody registers a boat to a mooring, and then you find out there's a dinghy on there.
Right.
Do you guys issue violations?
It should be a violation if the large boat is on it. But I would have to be out in patrol, and Tyler would have to be out in patrol, and would have to catch a larger boat on it other than the boat that's supposed to be on it.
So I asked Tyler last year, and this is nothing against him, when it was budget time, I said, based on your budget and your time, are you pretty much harbor management or are you harbor patrol? And he spent most of his time as management, not even patrol. So for you guys to go out there, buy X date and check on these boats, and I'm saying this because I was the Assistant Harbor Master in Barrington for four years. I would get in the boat, and I would literally go to every mooring, and I'd look at the sticker, and I'd look at the boat, and if the boat didn't match, they got a violation.
Absolutely.
So I don't, I don't even understand how that would be an issue there, with the smaller boat being on a, or an unregistered vessel.
What do you mean with the smaller boat? It's simple, it's simple. I have a large boat, and I register my smaller boat.
They don't have the resources to monitor it, is what they're saying, right?
You get in the boat and you go look, that's, that's.
Okay.
The other question I have is the GPS system, you guys don't have that yet?
Of course we have a GPS system.
No, not in the boat, GPS in the mooring field.
Of course we do.
You do?
Yeah, go to online moorings.
No, the reason I ask is there was a gentleman that applied for harbor, not harbor patrol, the Harbor Commission a couple of years back, and he said he has experience in GPS mapping mooring fields, and that always wasn't done yet. So that's been done.
All you have to do is go to online moorings, go to the front page and hit chart, and it charts all the moorings.
Yeah, but they're.
You can see all the moorings.
So they did realign everything?
They have not done, we have not done a realignment, we have never done a realignment. There hasn't been a survey or a study on that, no. We have never done a realignment.
Counselor Perry?
Yeah, I have a question on the billing, you said you were chasing people for money?
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Okay, so how do you bill?
What do you mean how to rebill?
How do you collect it, when you rent out a mooring?
Yep.
How do you collect the money?
Online moorings, so we send them an email, they get an email that's forwarded to them or a letter.
Right.
And they get the letter, and it says to go online and pay. And it tells them what they owe since 2023, when we've been on that program. I went on and verified all the payments that were made in 2023 with what the town treasurer's office had given me for a list of all the checks that had came in in 2023, 2024, and 2025. And I've verified them in the system to make sure that they are present and any of the online payments that are in the system. And then anybody who's due gets a notice that they need to pay additional mooring fees, that they haven't paid their 2023. I had three today alone that paid 2023 or 2024 non-payments. And people are being very nice about it, and they're like, oh yeah, yeah, you didn't come chasing me last year, you know? Should have lost their mooring.
Well, that's what I would say.
Well, well, that brings up another thing, but this isn't the.
Let's not stray too far from the agenda.
This isn't the time or place for it, but losing a mooring is simple. May, first, you have to have it paid for. If you don't have it paid for, by, this is how simple it is. If you don't have it paid for by May 1st, you need to wait 60 days, you have to notify them, wait 60 days, according to our town code, wait 60 days for them to respond. If they haven't responded in 60 days, they have to contact the mooring contractor. Mooring contractor has to pull the mooring. The mooring has to be placed in the mooring contractor's property for a full year before we can give that space to somebody else. It's ridiculous, we have to really.
And you're saying that that's a stroke of an ordinance to change that?
That's an ordinance.
Let's change, let's change the ordinance.
Absolutely.
Sounds like, sounds like we'll be advertising.
Portsmouth, Bristol.
So I just told the town administrator, I live in a landlocked town, this is all Greek to me, like I have no idea.
Counselor Janik.
Yeah, anybody wants to discuss it, just give me a call, and we'll talk about it and we'll get it straightened out.
So when you talked about, when you talked about people who pay for like a 20-foot boat, but they put a 30-foot boat on that, does that affect the swing?
Yes, it does. And it's actually supposed to be illegal for them to do that.
Because it would be.
According to town ordinance, yes.
Right, it could bang into another boat, correct?
Correct, and according to town ordinance, the larger vessel, if we showed up at the mooring and the larger vessel was on the mooring, it's not registered to that mooring. And because it's not registered to that mooring, we could fine them, we could, you know, remove their boat from the mooring, so on and so forth.
Or I'm at the mooring next to it, and that big boat that's not registered there bangs into my boat?
Bang into it, that's correct, that's correct.
And I know you looked at like-size communities and what their costs were.
Yes, the commercial and non-residents are a little higher in Portsmouth. Like, for example, Portsmouth charges approximately $500 for a non-resident. We're going to be $335.
Because you're really only increasing a little bit.
That's correct.
And, and part of it is taken with the $7 registration, so we're really not raising them.
Right, we're one of the smaller communities, like Portsmouth has like 1,500 moorings. So, you know, Portsmouth has a much, is a much larger community. Because they have 1,500 moorings, they have, you know, the full-time harbor masters, paid assistants, you know, so on and so forth. They're out there all the time, they're issuing tickets, so on and so forth. It's very difficult, I mean, I, my stipend is very little. I do this for my love of the harbor and as a favor for Tyler, because Tyler was my assistant when I was the harbor master, and he asked me to come help. That's the only reason I'm doing it. And the time that I invest, I'll bet you I put in at least 10 hours a week. At least 10 hours a week for the little tiny stipend I get.
Who could say no to Tyler, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, do we, do we have a motion already on the floor? No, okay, Counselor DiMederos.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, there'll be discussion, to approve an increase in mooring fees as listed.
Can I make one more?
Hold on, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by a couple of people, okay, now discussion, Counselor Camino.
The way this is presented, I think we should table this, get some more information. I think our fees should be a little more money than what they actually are, and come back with a better increase fee to what's here. It's just, I mean, if Portsmouth's $500, and we're like way underneath them, I just think this should be reworked a little bit to increase the fees a little bit higher and understand this chart a little bit better.
Well, my comment to that would be Portsmouth and Bristol have more amenities, more places to tie up. We've got no place to tie up in town. We've got no amenities, we've got no pump out in town except at the marinas. So we have nothing to offer for what we're charging.
But we have a big waiting list to get on our moorings, correct?
We have a, right now, 15 total, 15 total people on the waiting list, nine of which who have not responded to renewals. Nine of which are not even.
I mean, okay, if you're fine with the fees, I'm just trying to.
Mr. Solicitor.
So the current ordinance does say the commission shall annually recommend separate fees for resident and non-resident uses of recreational and commercial moorings. It doesn't really say how those are adopted. And I, I know that we have a fees and fines resolution, and I'm wondering, and I would just ask Ginny, but she doesn't know, and I don't know, if the, if the mooring fees are contained within that fees and fines resolution that we do on an annual basis. If it is, then we should incorporate these fees into the resolution so that we can vote on it as part of that resolution. Like, and I gotta mention, I think some of this language needs to be cleaned up as far as.
Can we, can we do this, Mr. Solicitor? Counselor DiMederos amends her motion to direct you to take the new fees, and if they are there, incorporate them into the fees and fines resolution to be voted on by the council.
Yeah, and if they're not, we'll figure out how to do it, but I might need to talk to you. I have a good relationship with the harbor master, and I, meeting you for the first time, but I'm going to need some clarification on some of these language too, because it really is not something that I'm used to dealing with.
Continued discussion.
You're amenable to that motion, okay. Counselor Hayden.
My question, awesome point about the amenities, we don't want to charge $500 that Portsmouth is charging and not offer the same value back to our boat owners and residents, right? That's, that would, that would go, that would backfire on us.
Correct.
How can we offer some of those amenities? Do we have the capacity to add more tie-ups? Do we have the capacity to get some of these other amenities in our town? And if we don't, I understand, but if we do have the capacity, would a little bit of a higher fee allow you to fund those? And give the boating, give the boating communities some more, some more?
So we have the new, well, new old dinghy dock. It used to be the dinghy dock years back, and now, last year, I guess it was used as a dinghy dock also. That could be enlarged. Could the town make that a tie-up place for other boats? Absolutely.
And would a $10 increase allow enough funds?
CRM C, and you have to get the whole proposal, you have to build docks, and so on and so forth.
That's not, it's a slow process, but everything is, right, it seems? So, okay, well, I guess I throw it back to you. Would you rather get a little bit more money and have some funding for improvements like that? So that we can offer more amenities? Or would you rather get this passed through as is, sir?
Well, I think we've just been advised by Leo, counsel, to slow it down.
Just, just so, just so we're all on the same page, and I appreciate the insight, but the amended motion that's on the floor is to direct the solicitor to take the amended numbers, and if they're in the fees and fines table, to update them. And if not, he will come back to us with how we're going to do it. So it's kind of a wait and see as long as it fits, but if it fits, these are the new numbers.
He also had questions about the language.
I do, and I'll talk to the harbor master about it too, and anybody else who has problems.
Don't, never mind.
So what would be, so would it be?
No, no, I was, I was going to say, I'm more involved in all the moorings right now than Tyler. I'm doing all the administrative work for him, taking care of that and getting that out of the way. So if you've got any discussions you want to make, you're probably better off giving me a question.
If you give me your number or email before you leave, that'd be awesome, thank you.
Okay, is that, is that acceptable?
Two. That's all.
Mr. Solicitor, is that amended motion acceptable?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, so motion's been made and seconded. Actually, it was Counselor Janik who seconded the motion, right, you're going to second the amendment? Okay, so seconded by.
We have the motion again, please.
It is to direct the solicitor to, to put these, these fees in the fees and fines resolution.
If they're there.
If they are there, and if not, to determine where the heck they are.
These weren't effective until July 1st, 2025 anyway, so we have plenty of time to do this. And we can make changes as you go along.
And the fees can be changed up, down, whichever way we like, just with a vote?
Correct.
So the correction I was going to make was, you guys have the option, if you want, to increase these fees, to decrease these fees, or the date, I, we've got it saying July 1st, but you could make it when all the moorings are due, May 1st. That's kind of what we were.
Okay.
Makes sense.
You can go from there.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I just want to be clear, I don't want to increase the fee further than what you proposed unless we're going to offer those additional amenities to the town. So I don't want the, you know, everyone who owns a boat right now going, oh, Blake's trying to jack up prices on every boat. But if we're going to offer them something in return, I think they'd happily pay another 40 bucks or something, whatever that number is that we come, come to decide, so.
All right, all those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, Charter Review Commission, Commissioner Janik, discussion clarification on the Charter Review Commission's role in charter change, presentation and procedure to present changes to the electorate. Chair Janik, take it away.
Well, I'm glad to be back before you, thank you for the opportunity, I was here a couple of weeks ago. I explained what we're doing as far as the, well, who the members were, what we're doing as far as our meeting schedule. We're meeting twice a month through, right now it's scheduled through October, but it may end sooner if that's how all things play out. We are, we have looked at the charter for what we have. We've looked at the state charter, and it's the constitution as to how a charter commission relates to that. And the questions were raised by members of the, of the commission as to what the council's expectations were for us as far as our role. Are we strictly advisory? Do you see any, any restrictions that you'd like to place on us that need to be placed on us? Are there none? And that is what basically brings me before you today. With a number of meetings scheduled ahead of us, I could think of other things to do with my summer. But we'd like to know if we're going to provide value to the town and what you feel that role will be.
So Chair Janik, first off, thank you for your service as well as the rest of your membership. And I think I speak for the entire council that there is absolutely value in the work that you are doing. To that end, I think I know the genesis of this question, and perhaps the solicitor can weigh in.
Those of us that went through this last year.
So the Charter Commission is an advisory board to the council. If the council, so you have, based upon your elected status, you have the ability to propose, advise, draft, any type of item that you want to, with, without restrictions. However, your, whatever you decide as a body, and how you ever decide to do that, your, your proposals will go to the council, who will then have the ultimate authority to whether approve, reject, amend, not take any action whatsoever. So totally up to you, recognizing under state law that the council is the only legislative body that can ask the voters to approve and put on the ballot a charter change. I'm sure I will be asked. Yeah. At our next meeting.
And just to be, I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt. And so I did read your memo, and I thought about it, then I saw the date of April 16, 2018. I thought maybe you made a typo, but I did talk to the Ms. DiMederos about it because I wanted to jog her memory, and I, and she indicated to me that there had been a prior legal issue that had been developed with the prior, a prior elected charter commission. And there was actually a court case over the, what that charter commission's authority was. Having not been part of that, I actually took it upon myself to call the former town solicitor, Mr. DeSisto, who basically indicated that that issue had been decided in a preliminary injunction. And, and I'm confident that what I, the advice that I just gave you is the absolute advice under the law. Only this council, only this legislative body can ask the voters to approve a charter change. You certainly do the work, advisory committee, have public hearings, whatever you want to do, that's up to you. I'm assuming that once the council gets their, your recommendations, they'll probably have their own public hearings on it as well. But ultimately, it's their decision what goes on the ballot and what's not, what does not go on the ballot, or if they make changes to your proposals.
All right, and I'll sit here and I'll state as a fact that with the, with the, in the language in those two documents, the constitution and the charter, it says will, it says shall, it shall, you know, the, the attorney language is not my forte. So I am asking for that very reason, that I can't state to the other members of the commission that this is how it's gonna work. We are strictly in advisory role, in an advisory role. We'll put forward whatever our recommendations are. I've learned a lot in the last three months on this commission. Some of it was very surprising and enlightening. But I wanted to come before you and make sure we were all on the same page. I can walk away and state that I brought it before you. You have a counselor here that, that has the, the knowledge and the ability, and has gone back and referred to the case history as to what our role is. So when I spoke earlier, two weeks ago, we also, I also asked about the expectations. And I know that in the past, there has been a large number of changes put forward.
Eighty.
I saw 102.
Yeah.
I thought it was closer to a buck twenty-five.
Well, I think we, I think they brought it down to eighty at some point, because we were just like, really?
Sure, and at that point, we might as well rewrite it.
Right.
And just to add there to Chairman, the one of your members, who I believe is the one who is asking these questions, was party to that legal suit that played out. So hopefully this, what you take back will jog his memory.
Thank you. I'm gonna trust that it will, and if there's any more discussion at our next meeting, then this will certainly be interesting.
Can I just ask one question? So I think one of your questions you had at the last meeting, which I thought was a good question, is whether you and this is up to you, but whether you want the, whether you want to forward those recommendations to the council one at a time, or you're gonna do it as a group? That's, that's up to how you want to receive them, but I, from my perspective, because these things will have to be reviewed for legality and language, you know, the sooner that you can get them, at least to me, the better off that we'll also have more time to review and make sure they fit the proper form, but that's just my opinion. It's not your.
If you wouldn't mind taking that back to the
Absolutely.
And I do intend to go to some of your meetings, not all of them, but some of them.
Okay, well, it's Tuesdays, the first and the third Tuesday of the month. First Tuesday is at the library, third Tuesday is at the senior center, 6:00 PM. And they are televised, and I will have those on the town website shortly. We've had two meetings that have been televised, and thank you again for the appropriation of the money to have that done. I appreciate that. And we look forward to having you join us.
Yeah, just one comment on my end, Mr. President?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Janik, for being part of the Charter Review Commission. I believe it's very important to our constitutional rights as citizens, and kind of looking forward to seeing some of the changes that you present to us. What I don't want to see happen is eighty come through, and it's like this blanket of all these, like, bring some valuable ones that are meaningful and that are gonna really, you know, and I think everyone's open to, to reviewing those resolutions. Once you have those created, we're looking forward to it. It's kind of got me on the edge of my seat, so thank you for all you do with the, the commission.
Well, thank you for the praise. We do intend to, to limit the number. I think the, the commission in general recognizes that to present you with a, a very high number of proposals is counterproductive. You can, you know, lose the forest for the trees. So we're gonna try to limit that, the number that come forward, and have them come with some value to the community, to the town, and to the charter.
Mr. Solicitor.
So I'm also the special counsel for the Charter Review Commission in Pawtucket, and one of the things that I did, that they did, I thought was interesting, I think you can maybe think about it, is you should maybe write to the department heads indicating that, you know, you're reviewing the charter, and if there's any specific changes that there, or clarifications they need as a department head who have to, you know, they review this stuff, or even the boards and commissions, that, you know, they come back with recommendations, and then you can maybe take a look at that. So that's helpful, because we're the people, this, this elected body of people who deal with the charter on a daily basis, but most people probably don't.
We have reached out, I've reached out to the town administrator, who's been very receptive and very cooperative, to ask that the boards and commissions be fed a survey that we developed. We have a link for them to fill it out online. There's even a QR code. We are also, and Patrick was gonna feed that down to his department heads. A letter to the editor has been written and delivered to this kind of times. Unfortunately, it hasn't made the last two editions, so I guess this mother, other more pressing issues, but it will be in there as well, seeking the public's input.
He left. Okay. Sorry, the reporter who covers this for the Secana Times was sitting over there, so. He stepped outside. Great, he's in a, he's in a red shirt.
And just so I can understand, after you bring resolutions to us from the CRC, whether we approve, reject them, after they're approved, they then go on a ballot for the people to vote on?
Correct.
Right, just so the people are clear on what happens with these?
Yep.
Okay, thank you so much.
So it'd be, if 2025 is not an election year, then it'll be a special election. It will need to be posted, funded, all that good stuff that has to go along with it, that I don't know. Speaking as a prior member of the Budget Commission, that we had put any money in the budget for elections for that purpose. That will be the new budget.
Something to think about, yeah.
Correct. Agreed. All right.
Anything further?
Not for me. If you have no other questions, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
All right. Onto some exciting news. Brian James, Open Space Commission. I'm not gonna steal your thunder, Mr. James. Well, now it's in the open, sir.
Well, gives me great pleasure to be making this statement, but after more than 20 years of work by members of the Open Space Commission and members of the Tiverton Land Trust, having numerous conversations with the Hicks family, they have agreed generously to convey a conservation easement over 48 acres of their property, about 48 acres, located at 471 Main Road. And the easement covers the entire western portion of the property from about the half to two-third mark, all the way down to 1,200 feet of waterfront. And I want to say again that we really appreciate their forward thinking, and they've demonstrated a very strong desire to support community access and protect natural areas. And so the purchase does not include any of the eastern portion, won't be affecting any of the commercial properties along that edge. The purchase price for the easement is $2,630,000. That's based on a professional appraisal that came in at that price, and associated costs will probably add another 100,000 to that for legal fees and survey work and whatnot. So 2.7 or so is our target. We're happy to, oh, and we have until March 31st, 2026, to make all the money available to close on this. Happy to say that the town council has already committed $1 million from the restricted fund, the Open Space Acquisition Fund. So that's a big boost to get us on the way. The balance of the 1.7 million will need to be raised through public grants, private foundations, business supporters, private individuals, and so rest assured, you'll be hearing more from us on that. The agreement also conveys a right of first refusal for the town and the land trust, should the owners decide to sell any remaining interest they have in any of the entire property. The easement will preclude the owners from any development of the premises, keeping it in its natural state in perpetuity. It will allow public access once a trail system is in place. That's gonna take some management and development to do that. It includes an access easement from Main Road. We haven't determined exactly where that should be yet. And it provides an important green space and passive recreation opportunity for a more densely populated portion of town.
Thank you very much.
There will be a formal press release coming. This was just a quick.
And as the solicitor just reminded me, we will be able to post this purchase and sales online, too, so if people want to see the details, but thank you and your commission for all their hard work in getting this done. I know it's been
It's been long, long time.
Many years.
I just had one question. The appraisals, are those, are those public as well, or are those private?
Everything that was just said is now in the purchase and sales, so.
But we have copies of the appraisals that were?
It was all presented
Okay, thank you.
during the sessions.
You can make the public, the public wants to make a request for that, they could get a copy through the, through the Access Public Records Act. Unless you want to post it online, it's up to you.
I believe it's about 113 pages.
Light reading.
Thank you, Brian. Great job. It's great for Tiverton.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Planning Board, discussion impossible vote to schedule a public hearing and approve funding to advertise the proposed additional amendments to the zoning ordinance as listed in the agenda.
Correct. This is just the follow-up to the meetings that we had before, remember, there were, there were other things that were in the yellow with the green column, or excuse me, the yellow column that needed to be reviewed, so this is the second round. So this is only to advertise it. The advertisement, have a public hearing if any council members or the public has any concerns about what the contents of this review is, that it's time to mention that it would be at the public hearing. This is only to advertise to meet the requirements of the zoning changes.
Do I have a motion to advertise as listed in the agenda?
I make a motion to schedule a public hearing and approve funding to advertise the proposed additional amendments to the zoning ordinance.
Second.
Okay, seconded by seconded by Councilor Janik. Any discussion? Hearing none. Oh, Councilor Comino?
Yes, just, I do have some issues with some of the stuff that's in here, and I will bring it up at the appropriate time.
Thank you, sir. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? None opposed. Okay, next item on the agenda, Councilor Hayden, discussion impossible vote to establish an account for the semi-quintcentennial 250th commission with an initial $500 funding. Councilor Hayden.
Yeah, so I want to say about two months ago, we all voted to celebrate the 250th anniversary, right, and the team that is working on this, the, I'm just gonna call it the 250th committee, is working diligently. They have a lot of great ideas that they're putting forth. One, just kind of wet your whistle a little, starting Flag Day, this is one of the ideas they come up with. Everyone in the town of Tiverton puts a flag up outside their house. And we run that all the way through 4th of July, so just one of the ideas they brought up to me, and time capsule, there's, you know, there's maybe putting a little 250th on the beach passes. There's a lot of great ideas that the team is coming up with, and you know, our neighboring town is actually doing a 350th, so, so just want to get them an account approved so that they can, you know, have a dedicated account. So if you see here, just approving a restricted account creation, and also making it ongoing, so each year, you know, the balance is carried over. So that was my request.
Mr. Solicitor, what would the mechanics of this be?
Just gotta identify the source of the funding, or you can just let the administrator do it. After he exceeds $500, and they'll figure out where the source would be.
But is it gonna establish an account that stays there all the time?
That was the request from the 250th commission, yes.
What would the reason for that be?
So my, my, to piggyback on Councilor DiMederos's question, I think we would want to potentially establish this by a resolution such that at the end of the 250th, whatever, remaining balance is sunsets and goes back into the general fund?
We can do that.
Unless they're starting to save up for the 300th, you know? One of the challenges here is that all the other towns around us have started doing this two years ago. Okay, Bristol, Little Compton, and we have months to get this going, and so it's kind of like, we haven't even created an account yet, so path of least resistance for them would be great, but I understand the mechanics of it all as well. So wherever it needs to come from, or however we need to do this, we need to get them some form of an account so they can operate.
So what would be the appropriate motion?
I think the appropriate motion would be to instruct the town administrator to find $100, to find $500 to start the account for this commission, the 250th commission, and, and we'll ask the town treasurer to send a restricted account once you find that money, and then people could donate it to it or whatever, so.
Just have the council push it first?
Perhaps.
Yes. Councilor Comino?
I'm gonna second it.
There wasn't a motion made yet, so.
You're gonna make it.
And I'll second it. So the motion would be to
Have the town administrator.
Administrator.
Can't that just come from council contingency? Isn't it that easy?
Yeah, it's that easy.
Well, I think
I'd want to have a discussion with the treasurer first.
Yes.
Very good.
Make a motion for the town administrator to make arrangements for $500 funding for this account for the semi, oh, you're not gonna say it.
You gotta say it if you're gonna do the motion.
He likes the way I say it, that's why. 250th commission. Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion's made, seconded, and then
Quick discussion.
One point of discussion. The sunset piece, will we have to do this via?
We'll do a resolution after, I guess.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'm assuming you want the commission to be, have in charge of this money. You're not gonna come back to the council every time they want to spend money out of this account, right? You want them to be able to do it, right? So that will be in the resolution. I'm also assuming that once we're past the semi-quintcentennial, the commission's gonna dissolve.
Correct.
So then we'll do kind of an accounting of whatever's left over.
All right, but this would allow them to actually go out and raise funds to populate this?
Or get other money.
That's the point I was getting at, like, 500 is just to get the account open so that they can start receiving donations, promote for donations, and have a place to put it, right, versus under Peter's mattress, so.
Okay. All right, motion's been made, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, wonderful.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Councilor Hayden, discussion related to current town impact fee percentage and funding allocation. Do you want to?
Call to me?
Yes. Councilor Hayden.
Yeah, so I'll just look for clarification from the, from the solicitor, please. So this impact fee that we have in place in the town of Tiverton is supposed to be reanalyzed every five years, and every five years, we're supposed to say, okay, maybe this fund shouldn't all go to this one spot, or maybe they should go to this spot, and we reanalyze the impact of the current developments that are occurring within the town, which we all know right now is a hot topic, and there's quite a few of them going up. So after doing some research and confirmed by the town clerk, Ms. Joan Shabbitt, we have not done this analysis that is allegedly required every five years for decades. So my request is that we start the process of reanalyzing and reviewing the town impact fee percentage for when a property is built by a developer, and what that number would be that they would contribute to the town that would offset, you know, the infrastructure that we need for that development that is coming in. So in my opinion, it's no-brainer, common sense, and again, to the solicitors, every five years, we're supposed to do this, it's been decades. So unless there's some limiting thing behind the scenes that I don't know, from the history of, you know, with the town council and whatnot?
No, so if, I could just add, so it's, I know we have to hire somebody, we have to hire a consultant. It would not be inexpensive. And I believe, and I could be corrected if I'm incorrect, but the impact fees basically go 100% to the schools. This may not be an opportune time for the town to look at it, given the significant decline in school population.
Well, I believe the way it's written says right now, it goes to the school, but after the analysis comes, maybe it goes to the library, because that's a new building. Maybe it goes to the new ticket shack at the beach. I don't know, maybe it goes to a new municipal building that qualifies as that new that, I'm just making things up. We, we, we may build a new building that qualifies as new next year, and then we don't have this lever to use because we did not do the analysis that is supposed to be done every five years, per the verbiage.
I think it would be appropriate, since this is not a possible vote item, but to ask the administrator to work directly with you and any other interested members of the council to take a look at what an RFP for those services might look like, so we can go out and get some bids and at least kick the process off.
Believe me, you know I'm against hiring consultants. We are the consultants, in my opinion, right, but this is something that you need a consultant for. I can do my own analysis if you'd like, but the answer's gonna be
As the solicitor said, state law requires.
State law requires you to have, to show that the fee you're charging is reasonable to the impact you're claiming, so that's why you need a consultant.
So right now, we're not compliant with state law. Is that accurate?
Many towns are not compliant with state law, sir. That's, I'm not, it's not an excuse, but towns just don't do it, because it's costly, number one, and this was really probably, I think, put in during the 1980s when there was a lot of building going on, and then it kind of And then it kind of dropped off during the Great Recession, and then it came back. But this is something that we haven't done in a while.
I just don't want to hear people complain about developments not having proper infrastructure. And this is the lever right here to get.
We are collecting impact fees, $1,900, more or less, but it probably does not accurately reflect the impact it's having.
Mr. Solicitor, that impact fee is a one-time fee, correct?
Correct.
So how would that affect the infrastructure, police fire, year over, year over, year over, year over year with one-time fee?
It doesn't. You just collect it.
And it, just for point of clarification, it's used to offset school bonds. That's what it's used for.
That's what the ordinance says, I believe, yeah.
Would they still have to follow that with the type of projects that they're developing? Or is that one of the things they can just bypass?
As the, I think the solicitor indicated, right now, they pay the existing impact fees, which goes to offset school bonds.
None of this, none of these fees go into the general fund at all? And the reason why I bring it up is because a lot of the contractors who complain about paying this fee wish they had some say on where it would go, which is kind of like what Blake's idea was. But I was under the assumption that it all went to the general fund. But, thank you.
Until we do an analysis, we can't change where it goes, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the next direction is to work with the town administrator on next steps on this project? Is that what was recommended?
Yeah. So, yeah, the administrator, I think, has direction.
Thank you.
You don't need to be involved.
I'll look at the request for proposal once it's done. But all you have, we have to fire, we have to hire somebody to do.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is Council President Edwards, discussion and possible vote to approve Resolution 2025-0013 in support of H. 5784. Quick word of background, Representative Carson put this bill in. This bill closes a loophole in Airbnbs where they're ducking the, essentially the hotel tax. Town's missing out on revenue. This bill, if passed, would close that loophole and provide additional revenue, which in the bill is coming directly to the municipalities. So with that, I'm like a vote to approve the resolution, or a motion to approve the resolution.
Still be.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made. And seconded. Discussion, Council Janik.
I totally agree with this. But this is for Airbnbs, which I don't believe we have, we have completed our ordinance on. So they're not really legal in our town at this point, correct?
The town has taken the position that short-term rentals are not permitted under our zoning code.
So.
But this is state law. I mean, this is, this is referenced as state law. It's not, it's not unique to Tiverton. It's just saying that to the extent that someday we allow short-term rentals, the taxes should be.
Because we're not acknowledging that they exist. Legally, we're not acknowledging.
The town's position, let me be very clear. The town's position is that a short-term rental is not permitted under our zoning code.
Okay.
Not yet.
How much hotel tax revenue did we throw away by making that resolution or that decision? Does anybody know? How much hotel tax we were receiving in the town of Tiverton before we?
We will.
The point.
Yeah, the state submits it to the town, the hotel tax.
Correct. But with, with the current, the current way that it's structured, let's say, the Airbnb that we do not allow or recognize as being legal in the town of Tiverton still exists, you know, as a single-family home, if the state collects any of those hotel taxes, the state gets to keep them from Airbnb. This would shit, this would shovel our portion back to us.
I don't believe that's accurate. I believe they send, they send their portion to the town, but they do not tell you which address it came from. So they don't say, 1112 Main Road, paid $100, 222, you know, paid this amount. They send a lump sum to the town. So where can we clarify?
Yeah, the, again, the gist of the bill that Rep. Carson submitted would be to close that loophole, which would result in those dollars flowing back to the town. I can tell you the governor's looking for that money, because the governor's always looking for money, and has other purposes for it. But if this bill were to pass, it would directly benefit the town of Tiverton.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor. None opposed. Okay. Next item on the agenda, interim administrator, Rhode Island Emergency Management something or other agency, fiscal year 2022, state and local cybersecurity.
Kay, you missed Kay.
You missed Kay?
I'm sorry?
Missed Kay on the agenda.
It's you. No, we did.
No, I'm sorry. I checked, I checked off J, not Kay. All right, Council, Council President Edwards, update on housing bills. So I spoke with our state delegation. I was informed that after the discussion that we had last meeting, as it relates to all of the proposed changes to the state housing that we asked the planning board to put together for us, all of those bills have been submitted. The delegation has submitted them in the form of enabling legislation. So if for some reason Providence loves the idea of, you know, massive density bonuses, they do not have to alter the law. So more to come from that front. But just to reiterate that, the discussion we had here with our state delegation was fruitful and has already resulted in legislation being submitted on our behalf.
And why I was late today was I was at the library with, with our delegation, talking with the Stafford Road, the Stafford Road, what is that development called?
Friendship Farms.
Friendship Farms. All the neighbors there, there that were so concerned. And Council, Representative Edwards did take more, did listen to them. And there may be other things that we can do that he'll come back to us. But that's, that's why I was late today.
And one follow-on point, too. I understand that multiple other representatives from other municipalities have reached out and are in favor of these bills. So there's a lot of steam outside of the greater Providence area to get some of these changes passed. Okay. So now, interim administrator, Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency Fiscal Year 2022, state and local cybersecurity grant award for cyber awareness training in the amount of $26,500.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is just for your information only. This is going to benefit, and it was awarded to our school department with the assistance of the fire chief, being the emergency management director. And the whole purpose of this grant is to be utilized to improve the local cybersecurity and also provide training to employees and staff of the school department. This, this grant was awarded, I believe, back in 2022. But it definitely is funding to help improve the ever-growing threat of cybersecurity to not only our town, but our schools. So this was just a point of information that we did get awarded $26,500 by the state.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Next item on the agenda, interim administrator Jones, discussion of possible vote to approve the Cox Business Commercial Services Agreement to get us the fastest internet on the planet in this building and elsewhere.
So along the same lines of cybersecurity, right now, we have the local, in Town Hall, we have a business connection, much like you'd find in your home, but it's just a business speed. I've been in contact with Cox, who want to do a lot of great things in town. There is a fiber connection that is available outside of Town Hall. And given that there is a cost impact with this, so just for information purposes only, currently we pay about $5,000 for the current internet speeds in connecting Town Hall. They would be willing to give us a 1 gig fiber secure connection into Town Hall based on MPA pricing, which is $1,100 a month. I was able to convince them to give it to us for a total of $10,000 a year with a little bit of savings because they want our business. So this is for me, for you to approve and authorize me to sign the contract with Cox for $10,000 a year to get a gig connection, fiber connection to Town Hall.
Still moved.
All right, motion been made. Do I have a second? Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor.
Thank you.
Great work. Next item on the agenda, interim administrator Jones, discussion of possible vote to approve a contract. Oh, sorry, we're going to take this one after exec.
Table M and O.
M and O or after exec. And P, discussion of possible vote on the appointment has been pushed to the next meeting at the request of the administrator, as is Q. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed executive session. Town Administrator Rhode Island General Law 4246-5A1 Personnel Job Performance Evaluation for Tax Collector Tony Lynn McGowan, notice given. And Town Administrator Rhode Island General Law 4246-5A1 Personnel Job Performance Evaluation for Senior Center Director Janet Holmes, notice given. And Rhode Island General Law 4246-5A5, discussion related to the sale of public property where in advance public information would be detrimental to the interests of the public in the industrial park. And Rhode Island General Law 4246-5A2 and 5, discussion related to the sale of public property where in advance public information would be detrimental to the interests of the public, industrial park, legal advice related to purchase and sale terms and conditions.
Still moved.
Motion by myself, seconded by either side. Councilor Cometto?
Yes.
Councilor Hayden?
Yes.
Council Janik?
Yes.
Council Dimondiris. I mean, yes. Council Paul?
Yes.
Council Perry? Is he? Yes. We are now in closed executive session.